I'd like to call this meeting to order with the adoption of the agenda. Any additions?
Madam Mayor, Administration would like to add eighteen point five, the annexation application, to the agenda.
Is there any other? Yes. An eighteen point six?
Yeah.
What would it be?
Personnel.
I'd like to add eighteen seven.
You're the mayor.
Which will be boreal hosing. Any other? Anyone else want to add anything? All right, can I have someone move to accept the agenda? Counselor Librian, all in favor, carried. Approval of minutes. Could I have someone approve? Counselor Lambert, all in favor, carried. You have my report. There are some things that I would like to move into in camera. The rest of it is pretty straightforward. If there's any questions, I'll answer them. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, all in favor, carried. Counselor Anderson, oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor. Okay, Counselor Anderson.
I have no point in reporting on this one.
Thank you. Counselor Jessman.
I have nothing to report.
Counselor Lambert.
On August eighth, I had the meeting with the, with everyone else here, with the Premier. And then on August, the evening of August eighth, I also had a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce. We had a presentation from the Alberta Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, it was very informative. Everyone got a, not everyone was there, but it was a good chance to get updated on what's going on and they, well, they did mostly a, what's it called? An orientation, I suppose, to all the new directors and the new president, just on how the chamber is run, what they can do. Yeah, it was, it was really good.
Well, good.
That was all I have to report.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Counselor Librian.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wilkis is not here. Could I have someone move to accept council reports? Counselor Jessman, all in favor, carried. Administrative reports. Is there any questions?
I have a question.
Okay. Do you want to turn your mic on, please?
Oh, how's that work? Good. For Director.
Red means go.
Going too fast.
Okay, go ahead.
Director Straub regarding the new road construction. I was just, just walking last week down the new street and, and just the markings, like these white lines around those, are those quality control lines or are they checking for improper completion of the surface or what are they for?
Good question, Counselor Jessman. They are, A, all the above. So as part of the deficiency list, we go through and we look for separate separations in the aggregate, bird baths or low spots, and those are all marked on the pavement for the contractor to come back in either slurry coat with a shiny, you'll see the sealant put over it, or a fine asphalt put in to fill the bird bath where it holds water. You don't want any water holding because it'll eventually degrade through the asphalt and then seal again. So some of those markings should have been handled by now, but those are the deficiencies and we continue to mark the roads, those until they're completed. So even though the road looks like it wasn't properly installed with the thin coat over it, that's to mitigate the bird bath. It's to seal it and make sure the water flows to the curbs.
Okay.
I have a question again about the crosswalk on Chonkley. Can we get one of those signs taken down so that people know where to cross and cars know where to stop?
So there's two crosswalks on, Madam Mayor, there's two crosswalks on Chonkley, I guess, or Chinchaoga. So are you talking the back lane on Chonkley Drive?
No, I'm talking about the one beside Long's Old House, that one. No, it's not on the walking trail. It's right on the road by Long's House. There's two separate crosswalks there. I took pictures.
The one on Chinchaoga Drive by the trail. Oh, across on one hundred and sixth street. Yeah, so, yeah, there's a double one there. So we are painting crosswalk signs later this week or doing, painting our crosswalks, some of the, especially the school ones. That one was going to be realigned. There seems to be a lot of confusion as to where that crosswalk should be in relationship. Normally a crosswalk is right at an intersection and not further down, but there was some complaint at one time and it was moved because they said it was too close to the intersection. So.
But the signs were never moved. Like there's a sign at the intersection and then up the street about fifteen meters is another sign.
Yeah, we're, we'll look at that this week. We actually have an electronic crosswalk sign to go in the next week on Chinchaoga Drive. So where the walking trail crosses Chinchaoga, where the post office box is, there'll be a digital electric sign there. And we have another one on order for this spring. So we are doing crosswalks this next week or two and we hope to get that one, as well as we will be painting the crosswalk signs on a hundred and, or crosswalks on a hundred and third here in the town hall to reestablish those. So we are going to try and correct those. CAO McCaskill has brought it up and it is on our list to do this year.
Okay, because there was a little discussion on where the crosswalk is.
We will establish a crosswalk in the proper position it should be.
I'm not going to say who was involved in that discussion, but it wasn't pretty.
And so again, Madam Mayor, the, we will try to establish the crosswalk in a place that meets standard highway practices and roadway practices.
The other question I have is the entrance to town. Is that sign ever going back up again or, I mean, the high level sign?
The electronics sign? Yes, it'll be, it's out for, going out for repairs and hopefully it goes back up. It's, that is an issue with Chinese workmanship, I guess. So we're having a hard time with parts. It's been shipped off to Edmonton to be looked at and if not replaced completely.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Lam, it's not showing up on here, so. But they're not showing up here, whether.
Okay, test. Okay, a few questions for Director Straub. I missed, I wasn't here for the last meeting in, I believe it was it August third, was that the last meeting? Yeah, okay. What did we chat about in regards to the ninety-second street with the gravel on the, on the road? Has there been any headway with, with Toco on that?
We haven't approached Toco yet on that. I've been busy doing a few other things and that would be a discussion CAO McCaskill and I will have to have with the senior administration over there. We are trying to keep it clean on a fairly regular basis, but we've been pretty busy lately. So we do have a broom and we are sweeping it. That'll be a longer discussion with the facility itself on what they do with their intersection.
So did we end up getting the street sweeper we had talked about in budget last year? Is that what you're using?
Yes, a broom for the loader.
Okay. Next question was, we just talked about the crosswalk, everything being painted this next week. So just so we don't run into the same issue as this year of not having any, is it possible to preorder and make sure we have enough to do the sidewalks and the, and everything for next spring? Because we did have quite a few complaints about them not being done until now, if, you know, if ever.
Yes, certainly. Counselor Lambert, the, the issue is we're transitioning between latex paint and the paint we have in stock. So it is our, and last year was a shortage on the newer, newer paints. So the plan is in the budget cycle this year to preorder all our paint for next year.
Okay.
With the new latex models. We can no longer get the commercial toluene based, which is a stronger paint, that's no longer available in Canada.
So have we used the latex paint before?
No, we haven't. We have to transition into it.
It'll hold up through the winter?
It is our impression that it'll have to be done annually every year. It'll, again, it, it'll only hold up mildly in winter. Long-term wise, the paint will wash off and wear off quicker, but that is a discussion that the federal government has made for us and decided that latex is what we have to do now and we're no longer allowed to buy the industrial quality paint for roads.
Gotcha. Thank you. One more, another question. I've had some residents come, or not, I shouldn't say complaint, just ask questions on when the street lights will be going up on one oh third.
Thank you for the question, Counselor Lambert. So we have the design plan in with Atco Electric, but due with, due to the immense amount of work they've been doing through the fire thing, they've basically put our lighting program in the back burner until they decide that it's ready to be proceeded. They do have an incident command system set up right now where they're dealing with getting their lines up and running and everything substantially established. We have put it in, it is in the process. We're just waiting for them to approve it and we are pressuring them to, before winter, because we don't want the street dark this winter. It's probably only a two-day installation, but getting them to commit to the two days is, is the hard part right now.
Okay. Sorry, last question. Just because we were talking about the sign to the entrance of the town there, it made me think of another thing. But what are, like on the top of your head, do you know roughly what the costs are on getting this thing repaired and, you know, potentially having it replaced in the future again?
No, I don't. We'll find that out once it gets shipped out.
I'm just wondering like what, if we can look at maybe some comparisons on how much this has cost us to begin with, how much the repairs have been and are, you know, potentially going to if this fails again versus just buying a non-digital sign for the entrance.
I think that is a very good question to ask. Currently, we were working with what was supplied under the Highway fifty-eight realignment project. Of course, those products were not selected by the town. They were supplied through the, through the government program, through however that capital project went. We are looking at options. Again, these signs weren't the best signs to start with. They are nice. They do look good when they work, but it's the working and the cold weather we're having an issue with. So we certainly look at options on what the overall replacement cost will be for an equivalent sign, as well as if council wants to look at a fixed sign just for that, fixed lettering instead of a digital sign.
Or a budget question for a different entrance sign altogether.
Somewhat like the one we had talked about earlier. Yes, certainly if council wishes to change the signage at the entrance, then administration will support you however needed. An archway or whatever. But we are here to support whatever decision you would like us to look at. Currently, we are attempting to repair that sign, keep it going for now. If it's cost prohibited, then we'll bring that back and look at replacement options as well as maybe changing the whole way we do our entrance to high level.
Perfect. Thank you. Sorry, CAO. Was there not a administration report in the agenda for this month?
No, the administration reports are given at the first meeting of each month.
Okay, so I missed it.
So the August second one was, was not, there was no time between the end of the month and that meeting. So we'll, you get July and August in the September eleventh.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any more questions? Could I have someone move the action report? Counselor Anderson, all in favor, carried. The upcoming events. See, you guys squished them all together this time. Seeing none, could I have someone move the event sheet? Counselor Librian, all in favor, carried. RFD regarding the Christmas card.
Madam Mayor, I'll have Lady Waters, our municipal clerk, present that report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This came to us as a request when we were looking at Christmas cards for the year to put this out as a contest. So we looked at the amount of cards we would need, which is about two hundred and twenty of them, and the printing costs. So if we're, if we print in batches of fifty, we figured that about six different prizes, six different designs might make sense. But we're putting that forward tonight to see what council thinks and how they would like this to go. We're proposing a start date of September tenth so that it can go on our website and social media sites, and an ending date of October tenth so that we do have enough time to bring these to the local printer and have them made.
Discussion. Yes, Deputy Mayor.
I think this is a great idea and I'll move the recommendation.
No questions, all in favor, carried. Thirteen-two, temporary human resource position.
Madam Mayor, Council, we've, as discussed with Council at a previous meeting, we have discussed what we would look for, what we may need to cover the human resource position while, while the incumbent is, is out. And what we presented to Council is a temporary support clerk position. The most of the work that needs to be done, it tends to be clerical in nature. It's not a higher end. We can get support on that. So we're looking at filing, preparation of documents, assistance with ads, putting together, phoning up candidates to look for interview dates, following up on references, that type of thing. The benefit administration or the policy issues, we can use legal counsel on the policy issues and Director Phillips had talked to our benefit consultant about looking for someone who could assist with the benefit administration in the interim as well. So this, this position is about thirty thousand dollars less annually than what the coordinator's position was. That gives us room to hire a third party to do our benefits administration. We currently do have benefits administration on our wellness and health spending accounts by a third party. So this would just be an extension of that.
Any questions, Council? Have you advertised it all or are you, how long will it take or?
So we're waiting for Council's approval because it is creation of position. We will advertise immediately. I think, Director Phillips, did you want to talk about the process? And we'll, we'll try to have this hired by the end of September.
Yeah, so right now we'll be doing, just finishing up the job description details. We did present what the job description would be as a clerical or support position, but there's just a few details that we have to add in there. And then we will do the, hopefully not a long process, just because it'd be nice to have a body in here before year end and getting some of our filing caught up on HR's side of it while we have downtime in the winter, so.
Just a question. Why is it a part of the job description that they work with the town's social, social?
Social committee?
Yeah.
I think that is, I think most of, well, I'm not sure if all of the positions do, but the social committee is just part of, I think, the, at the previous job description was like wellness of the employees or employee wellness to work with, say, staffing, events, birthdays, like helping, doing like birthday calendars, anniversaries. Team building is, yeah. So it's part of the original, original job description.
Okay. Yes.
I have a question. So if the incumbent were not able to continue in his line of work, would this person be able to transition over to his, into that position? Or are we going to just continue to outsource human resources?
We would have to make a decision at that time. Currently, the leave of absence has been extended, but that process can take over two years to resolve. So we're looking at a temporary position that could be at least another eighteen months in length. This to give us an idea whether or not we need that level of position to do human resources or we can work with a third party or like outsourcing some of the elements. But that will come back to Council at that time. So it is, we will have to reestablish the position if we want a coordinator position.
Any other questions? Okay. Could I have a motion then? Okay, all in favor, carried. The hydrovac disposal.
Madam Mayor, Director Straub will present that to Council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. So this issue is not one of a want. This is a to bring the town into compliance. So over the years, the operations has been using a, like a burrow pit dugout in order to control our waste from our hydrovac operations. On a larger dig, we could produce anywhere between four or five loads a day on a major dig. With the current regulations and the changes to the regulations, we will be required, we would be required if we don't have an approved site, like a properly Alberta Environment approved site, we would have to haul to a site like Secure Energy out of town. And that, each load would be about a thousand dollars disposal plus a turnaround time of an hour and a half each way. We've noticed that local sites like our other utility partners are having the same issue. So with the current fiber project in town, that was a major issue that was brought up and we were unable to accept any waste there. In fact, our waste was brought up as a potential non-compliant process with Alberta Environment. So we addressed it with them and said we would work towards mitigating that and coming up with a proper disposal process on site. It is a very simplified method we are looking at. So Telus Fiber came in and established a centrifuge system, a mechanical separation behind the shop. We were, we're using it as well as all the local, their partners, Lead Corps, doing the work. So as part of that process, their environmental person is going to assist us with developing our own site. That site will be moved off-site this fall. I believe they'll be shutting down due to the winter and then they'll need some more disposal in the spring. So it's operations intent to ensure that we have our site up and running as soon, as possible. So we're in compliance before the end of the year and as well as being able to offer that to the local utilities as a site for them to use locally to save them some costs in establishing services, as well as the town to potentially get some revenue to offset the operating cost of the site. So what we're requesting, there's three levels of sites. First is a notification site. It's a gravity, basically a site where the water dewatered by gravity, sun dries it out. We pile up the dirt and haul the water away or pump it into our sewage system. The second one is a mechanical process. If the town established that, we'd be looking at two to three million dollars. So that's not really an option. And the third is a full approved site and a full approved site deals with hydrocarbon and we don't want to deal with that anyways. So our notification site would be a site where they, where we intend to establish it up on the old snow dump site. It's very good, solid ground back there. The trucks would dump, the, the soils would settle out, drain down a slight slope, be collected, the water would be collected, soil would be dried, stockpiled and then hauled away later to different projects. The, the biggest cost for us that is just establishing the site as well as establishing a new snow dump. So we looked at a variety of areas around town we could put it. Being in the yard, it can be controlled. For one, we don't want other parties coming in and dumping whenever they want. Establishing a new site in the back somewhere out of the way would have been a lot cost for, because we don't have the groundwork back there. The current snow dump site is well established. It's very solid. It's easy to change into a hydrovac dump site. If you look at the drawing that I submitted, it shows the potential new site for a snow dump. The snow dump can be established over numerous years. The intent is to clear it from the small trees that are there. It's just scrub brush. So we intend to clear the trees, stockpile those and then burn those this winter, establish a ground pad with a small berm around it and then freeze it in for the winter. Every winter it'll be frozen and the water will be retained there and evaporate during the summer. So it's pretty well equivalent to the current area we use as a, as a snow dump area that's listed. It'll just be off on the backside. It's also our intent to allow access to businesses in town. Currently, they're using a small dump site out by the sewage jagoon and that's not really a proper site for snow anyways. It's not one of our official snow dumps. So this would be open to the business owners if they wanted to haul snow in also. So that's kind of where we're sitting. The, the budget I submitted is probably closer to the upper end. I didn't want to come in short on the project. We do have some opportunities in the next week or so to work with our partners just to the south of us doing some work out there. They have some equipment and dirt available for us. So it's our intent to lower the cost as much as possible during the installation, but without going over this budget. So again, it's to establish a waste site for us, as well as our utility partners and establish a new snow dump site.
Who are our partners to the south?
The Enday Project. So currently, Enday is hauling a bunch of dirt out and they're trying to get rid of it. We have an opportunity to use that and I've reached out to them and they also have some equipment sitting. So we're willing to partner up on that and they're willing to move some dirt over to us at no cost. So, you know, it is an opportunity to save a little bit of cost for us as well as help them out. So again, this project is more, more a need than a want. We do have to bring our site into compliance.
So you're asking for a hundred and thirty thousand?
Yes, excuse me.
And that the, the hydrovac is eighty-four thousand?
For the site, yes.
And the snow dump is thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight.
Okay.
With a five percent contingency, so. Again, we're, this is what we, I've estimated based on previous work and the intent is to come under always, try to get it done as reasonable as possible. I prefer these numbers. Didn't go out to the contractors right away, but they will.
Any questions? I can't see on here whether they're on or not. Counselor Anderson?
Director for, question for Director Straub. So by moving the new snow dump over to the other side of our water pond and subjecting that to snow removal um, and subjecting that to uh, snow removal which contains salt, is that ground um, suitable so that it doesn't contaminate that, that water pond?
Yes.
Through seepage?
Yes, Counselor Anderson. The, the soil is, it'll be clay pack. It'll be retained there. Uh, we do snow, store snow on the west or the east side. So the east side of the pond is the same soils. And we do store there also. So there, there is no permeation between the clay liner of the reservoir and the actual snow dump sites. There's no connection between the two. And the water will hopefully evaporate off. That is our intent. Currently, at our current snow dump, it does melt a bit, and the sand is retained, and then the water trickles off into the creek. The new site, we want to retain as much as possible so that salt doesn't end up in the tributaries around us.
Deputy Mayor?
Don't we currently have two snowed-up sites? Isn't there another one off a hundredth Avenue?
Yes, Counselor. We, uh, we have one over by Community Park, and that's our second site. Uh, we fill both sites. And we fill both sites two or three tiers.
Is there not a possibility of just slightly expanding the size of that and saving the cost over here for saving this um, area for maybe other uses down the road, or that's not a consideration?
So it, the, the expansion of that site would be short-term. Uh, there was an IDP initially established for housing back in that area to the north of that area, as well as the community park to the south. So we could triple it in size, but I don't know if that's something we should do. Uh, the second part of that is a distance to haul. By having two sites, we split our, our haul distance into two different areas of town. We try to keep all the Bs in that area over there, short distance to that site, and then the downtown core and the other stuff goes to the public worksite. Uh, they're both very full. We would have to do a sizable increase over there, and this way, both are, could remain somewhat permanent for the next five or ten years.
And then if we're building a berm around this site and anticipating that it would evaporate the following summer, what happens? We have a wet year, and it just gets trapped in there, and, and we end up with a lake?
Once it settles out, we can drain it away. And we do drain the existing one. We would prefer that it evaporates. Uh, if we do have a wet year, we'll wait till it freezes and then haul over top of the frozen stuff, so. But uh, we've had no issues with our current one, but we would like to evaporate more than allowing to go to the environment.
And then finally switching back to the hydrovac site, given the testing that we've had on multiple areas, the high salinity levels aren't going to impact in what people can put on this pad?
Uh, no, uh, currently, we are dealing with it. So the, the water they are taking off sites isn't an issue. The only issue we have is we have to establish a groundwater monitoring around the pond to prove, it'll be similar to the landfill. It'll be inconclusive, because the background water will be actually higher than the pond water. That just lets them know that we're not leaching in the pond water into the uh, into the surrounding area. Part of that also includes a fairly comprehensive operation plan, and that operation plan has to identify how you mitigate what you do if you come across hydrocarbon being dumped. And that's why we need a little larger area, so we can separate it if we do have hydrocarbons, and that would be billed back to whoever brought it in. Again, uh, the lighter hybrid, hydro, hydrocarbons can be dealt with at our local landfill. We can haul them out later. But the water is the bigger mitigating issue we'd have to deal with. So again, the groundwater wells are there because they want them. I'm not sure if they're actually gonna be beneficial.
What's the environmental cleanup cost on this, when we abandon it?
There should be no environmental cleanup, because uh, we're not putting any environmental hazards, and it's just clay and water. Uh, that is, the intent is not to have hydrocarbons or contaminants. And uh, there should, you know, the, the current waste we're dealing with is pretty good. The other option, like I said, is we would have to haul our waste out of town, and that's just economically, it would be sufferable, and then just logistically to have a truck out of town, that much would be uh, that much work. Uh, again, the town has got, um, has been uh, quite lucky over the past few, few years to be able to use the site we've had. But now we have to bring it up to the provincial standards.
Any other questions? Someone want to make a motion? Deputy Mayor? Moves to? The recommendation? All in favor? Carried. Um, correspondence for action?
Uh, Madam Mayor, we're in a receipt, uh, in receipts, sorry, of a uh, correspondence for the Denetaw First Nation. Uh, they've been successful in setting up their women's shelter for domestic violence issues and as well as their temporary detox center. They're finding that the individuals using that need transitional housing um, after their, uh, after their stays in those facilities. And they're uh, just asking for our support to put in an application to CMHC for transitional housing.
They, they haven't got anybody staying in the women. They haven't built it yet.
Or, well, they've written approval for it, yeah. I'd, I'm, I'm thinking the transitional is more for the detox center than it is, but it may be necessary for both.
Council? Motion? Okay. Uh, move to, I don't think there's a recommendation.
Yeah.
Move to give a letter of support to the DNA? All in favor? Carried. Um, CN for their Rail Safety Week?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, CN has asked that the Council proclaim Rail Safety Week. Uh, the municipal clerk has prepared the proclamation for Council's review.
Motion, Council? That we proclaim um, the eighteenth to the twenty-fourth of September? Counselor Jessman? All in favor? Carried. The, um, questions? Do you have any questions, Vic? Come forward, give your name.
I'm sorry, I can't hear what you're saying. I have hearing aids, and for some reason, they chose this moment to quit working.
Darn it.
But I, uh, I'm a longtime resident of High Level. In fact, when I first came here, there was only one house here. But anyway, we have a weed problem here, and I wonder, do we have a weed inspector or anything like that here?
Um, we do not have a weed ins-
Can I come up?
Yes, you can. We don't ha- we don't have a weed inspector in town, um, but we do, there is one in the county. So you're having problems with weeds behind your property or all over the town?
The, the thistles especially. They blow all over town. And along the railroad track, if you look down there, it's, it's just loaded with it. And I see that you cleaned off that area north of my place there. But I wish it had went a little farther and done a little closer to the trees and done the back alley. And I notice also in that new area that you're painting by the hospital, there's lots of weeds coming in there too.
The community park?
I don't know what that is, but it's
Okay.
That's
The, the rail, the rea- the rail is, is, uh, belongs to CN. So we would have to write a letter to them to have them clear it.
Is there anything you could, you could put pressure on them for that?
We could send a letter. It's pretty tough putting pressure on CN. But I know people now, so maybe we can.
Okay. Well, anyway, uh, I'm sorry I can't hear.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Thank you for your time.
No, no, we will get back to you about the weeds. I don't know about the weeds in Community Park. I haven't been by there for a long time. But we will look at it. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Okay, thank you, dear.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too, dear.
All right, so that will end our public portion of this meeting. Oh, yes. Fifteen-one to fifteen-three, correspondence for information? Counselor Anderson? All in favor? Carried. So we will move into our closed session. Could I have a motion to move in, please? Counselor Libron? All in favor? Carried.